Good evening. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Wellmet Zoning Board of Appeals. Ms. Roberts, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Coling.
Here.
Ms. Norg.
Here.
Mr. Schneider.
Here.
Mr. Sermon.
Here.
Chairman Duffy.
Present. Ladies and gentlemen, ladies. For those of you new to our proceedings, the purpose of this board is to hear evidence on applications for variances from our zoning ordinance and on applications for special use. Based upon the evidence we hear this evening, we will make a recommendation to the Village Board of Trustees as to whether the applications that come before us should be granted or denied. We will vote to recommend granting or denying each application for variation based on whether the application meets the standards of review set forth in Section 5.4.1 of our village ordinance. Applications for special use will be considered based upon whether the standards of review set forth in Section 5.3.1 of our village ordinance are met. The Village Board of Trustees will consider the recommendations we make this evening at their next regularly scheduled meeting on November 27. Our recommendations to the board are advisory only. The Village Board has the final say on all applications and will make its own determination as to whether to grant or deny them. The Village Board is not legally bound by our recommendations. There's one small exception to this rule. If this board makes a negative recommendation with respect to an application, in order for the Village Board of Trustees to approve that application, a supermajority of five Village Board members must vote to approve it rather than a simple majority of four. There is one other small peculiarity to our proceedings of which you should be aware. This board does not operate by a majority vote. We operate instead by a tyranny of four. In other words, no matter how many board members are present on a given evening, in order to get a positive recommendation from this board, an application must receive four affirmative votes. Ordinarily, this board consists of seven members. Tonight, however, due to some absences, we have five members present. Ms. Roberts, as Assistant Director of Community Development, sits with us tonight in an advisory capacity only and is not a voting member of the board. Please be aware therefore that a vote of three to two in favor of an application will technically go into the record as a negative recommendation with the legal effect that I have previously described. In recognition of this unusual feature of our procedure, when we do not have all members of the board present on a given evening, we give the applicants who are scheduled to come before us that night the option of requesting a continuance to the next available date on our schedule. The next available date for any applicant who would like to request a continuance this evening is December 5. There is no penalty for asking for a continuance. No such request will be held against you when your case is eventually heard. If you wish to ask for a continuance, however, you must do so at the beginning of your presentation before making any substantive arguments as to the merits of your case. Please also be aware that if you request a continuance, there is no guarantee as to how many board members will be present on the evening to which your case is continued. Bless you. The cases we shall hear this evening will be heard in the order set forth on the pre-printed agenda located on the table next to the door. Actually, they won't. We're going to start with 611 Forest, then we're going to go to 819 Michigan Avenue, and then we will continue with the schedule as ordered on the sheet. When your case is called, please proceed to the podium, state your name and address, and tell us exactly why your application meets the standards of review that are applicable to it. Each member of this board is a longtime resident of the village and has visited your property during the past week. In addition, we have received from village staff these green booklets containing all written information that you have submitted in support of your application, as well as any other correspondence the village has received. Accordingly, it is not necessary that you repeat what you have already stated in writing. Please just hit the high points with particular attention to why you believe your application meets the standards of review. After the applicant has had a chance to speak, we'll open the podium to others who wish to speak either for or against the application. Everyone will be permitted to have their say, though we would ask that you keep your comments as short and to the point as possible. After we have heard all oral presentations, I will close the evidence and the members of the board will discuss what they have heard and take a vote. Once the evidence is closed, no further testimony on an application may be offered. The only people entitled to speak during that part of the proceeding will be the members of the board. This meeting is a legal proceeding, and all testimony tonight must be given under oath. If you're here and planning to testify tonight, I would ask that you raise your right hand at this time and be sworn. I know, I'm still... Do you swear or affirm that you will tell the truth in the testimony that you're about to give? If so, please say I do.
I do.
Ms. Roberts, will you please call the first case of the evening?
Our first case is 2018 Z-54, 611 Forest Avenue.
Welcome.
Hello, I'm Jessica Corey, and at 611 Forest Avenue is the address. And I would like to ask for continuance for the next date, which I believe is December 5.
Okay. Do I have a motion for a continuance?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
As well.
Thank you.
You are continued.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Our next case is 2018 Z-53, 819 Michigan Avenue.
Welcome.
Thank you, I'm Sarah Like, 819 Michigan Avenue, and I would also like to request a continuance to December 5.
I had to have a motion for this?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye as well.
Thank you.
See you on the 5th.
Our next case is 2018 Z-50, 435 Lake Avenue. The applicants are not available on December 5, and we requested that the case be tabled to December 19.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye as well.
Our next case after that is 425 Lake Avenue. The same applicants are requesting that that case be tabled to December 19, please.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Norg, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye as well.
Our next case is 2018 Z-47, 1160 Michigan Avenue. The applicant is requesting to continue to January 16, 2019.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Schneider. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye as well.
Then our next case is 2018 Z-36, sorry, 241 Kilpatrick Avenue. This is a revised request for a 281.15 square foot front yard impervious surface coverage variation to permit the widening of a front walk on the legal nonconforming structure.
Thank you, sir. So, as I speak today with Mrs. Lisa Roberts, I think the...
All right, I'm sorry, I'm going to stop. I need you to introduce yourself and where you live.
Yeah, so my name is Mustafa Sabki, and I am requesting for the variation which is the...
241.
She mentioned Mrs. Lisa Roberts to 241 Kilpatrick.
Yes. Okay, thank you very much.
You're very welcome, sir. So, my case, I think, after going back and forth, I think right now we agree. And last time, Mr. Adler, John Adler, he found out, so, which is, I am requesting right now only 29 feet for my sidewalk. And my last statement with Mrs. Lisa Roberts, I'm going to cut off like one foot all the way through the front yard, which is, that is going to give me exactly which is that the sidewalk it's been before. And also, I'm trying to do the railing for the sidewalk, and the railing also is going to take, like, so the contractor, he's not going to put the railing immediately at the corner because he's going to mess up with the concrete. He's going to put it at least like, he said, like a half a feet from the corner, which is going to take one foot from the side, and I'm going to cut one foot all the way around the other side like I mentioned to Mrs. Roberts, and that's it, that's my case.
Which, are you cutting it, so as we face your house, the south side is the side that you're going to take a foot of width off? Is that what you're proposing?
That's correct, yes.
So you're keeping the sidewalk connected with the retaining wall to the driveway?
That's correct. And after all, when I cut that with the railing space and everything, so it's going to be only 5.3 feet.
It says it's going to be 6.3 feet wide.
No, plus one foot of the railing is going to be, nobody's going to walk through the railing.
All right. And so this railing, you're going to have to get permits for the railing, you know that, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Do we have any other questions for the applicant? Does everybody remember this case?
Yes.
All right. So my question to you is, since your last time before us, have you done anything else with the property?
No, sir, so...
So we still have that door out the side that used to have the sidewalk to it, right?
That's correct, yes, sir.
And you were talking about, how were you going to handle that? I can't remember. Were you going to put us, were you going to turn the stairs around and put a sidewalk toward the back, or were you going to get rid of that door? What were you going to do?
So, the previous owner, he told me, and as you see, they don't use it, he told me, for the last 15 to 20 years, which is, it's been there, and nobody uses it, and even that, it's not safe, anybody, you can shake it like this. Either I'm not using it right now, even I'm going to use it, I'm going to do the sidewalk straight, which is from the door, if we want to use it to the corner, which is going to be only like, it's not going to be concrete, so, which is, I rid of the concrete from that side, we don't, we don't need it, and they don't use it before, that's...
Right. So if you, so you are proposing that you, last time you were here, I thought you were talking about redoing that porch, right, or the stairs, and you were going to do some sort of a sidewalk, but it was going to be like stones or blocks that you were just going to lay in the grass, and that was going to be the walkway? Is that what you're talking about doing?
If I'm going to use that, but we don't use it so far, I'm going to, because this is a different...
Right.
For me, if they approve it for me, I will rid of that door, but that's why we are going another, that's another case with Mr. Scott, for the, if they approve for me the deck at the backside, so that is going to be door, which is another extra door to use, and if they approve for me, I will close it.
And then you don't need that sidewalk.
If they didn't approve it, I will keep it as it is.
Well, I just don't, I mean, you know, we're talking about front yard impervious surface, I just don't want to end up having you put, you know, sidewalk back that you took out already to try and compensate for the front walk that you poured.
That's correct, yes, sir.
So I, okay. So you're saying that the width of the sidewalk will be five feet, 5.3 feet, which you're saying is approximately the width of the original sidewalk?
That's correct, exactly. It's going to give you exactly the last from the oldest one.
So...
Yeah, go ahead.
Now, you're not, in that calculation, I guess, addressed to both you and Lisa, I mean, you're not, your impervious doesn't get reduced by putting the handrail over further, you know, your impervious is still the same, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so it's really just cutting off the one foot. I guess my question would be, if you're off by 29 square feet, what can we do just to get it in compliance? It seemed to take another foot off, no?
But you can't, just if I interrupt, the railing has to be on that concrete, at least six inches from the edge, right?
Yeah.
Because you anchor it
Yeah.
in the concrete. And so, seems to me that the, couldn't have, it doesn't have use of the full six foot three. It's at least six inches less or maybe more.
Okay.
So, so he's got six feet of width to work with after he cuts a foot off.
And, and then...
Then he's saying the railing is going to take...
So he's got 6.3, so he's got a little less than six feet, so he's still got a five and a half, five and three quarter feet of width. So to Mr. Sermon's point, I mean, that's still a very wide walk.
And the village, the, John Adler and their report identified that the average width of the sidewalk in that area was anywhere from three to five feet.
So to Mr. Sermon's point, I mean, could, could you take more than a foot off the width in order to make it work? Because then you're not asking for a variance. Right? Front yard, impervious surface.
39 feet.
Yeah, it's already way nonconforming, so even, I mean, even if he didn't have a walk, he would still be over the coverage, so he still needs relief, it's just a matter of, you know, how much...
I thought he was just looking for 29.
That was based on the discussion at the village board, as I understand it, if you look at Exhibit 1.5, the pre-existing condition before the walk was removed.
Right, that's not, that's not five feet wide.
No, I think the idea was that the landscaping area in here was approximately 20, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, 29 square feet of like open space that got filled in, and so the idea was to remove 29 square feet from the current plan to try to be equitable, I think.
But the width of the sidewalk, wasn't that wide before? Doesn't show that on the survey, I didn't think.
The survey, we understand, might not have been a correct, or may not have been accurate to the most recent condition on the property. And when you look at this photo, you can kind of see the walk looks straighter here than it does on the plat.
I guess the setback is 20, as we just saw, 27 feet, and if he's looking for 29 feet, it's really just one foot additional, one foot and an inch maybe additional, and then he wouldn't need the variance. He's only asking for 28 or 29 square feet.
Well, it's still over, you can't take 200 and...
It still needs a variance, yeah.
Because he's 281 feet over.
Yeah.
And he's taking 29 feet off because somehow...
I think, I'm sorry, maybe that was net with the, the south walk.
Mm-hmm.
That the, you know, the coverage over here.
So what's, do we know, what's the distance from this front sidewalk to, you know, the steps?
Well, here it says it's 39 feet.
It's 1.6, if you look at 1.6.
But the front yard is only 27 feet of it.
Yeah.
So he's only got to take off the 27 feet of the front, to the front yard setback.
Right.
And that gives him 27 feet, but how, I guess my argument is to call the area where the bushes were only 29 square feet. I mean, that's more than, that's more than
Right.
two feet wide to put those bushes in, and then the distance of 27 feet by one foot, you know, so this, how is that an equal trade-off? Because to get an equal trade-off, if you really look at it, you're going to reduce the width of the sidewalk by the width of that area that the bushes were occupying.
I think the 29 square feet was, was what was left over when you take out the south sidewalk also.
This area here.
So, right, so the...
This area.
So the south sidewalk plus 29 square feet would, I'd sort of equal...
Well, I think that was, yeah.
Yes.
I mean, it was in the village board discussion.
I guess, looking at it, given the situation that we're in here, we know it's never going to comply, but I would think that the width of the sidewalk, a public sidewalk is five feet wide, so I would think if he went down to four, that's about the best he could do, and that's still a wide walkway to all.
So four feet plus the width of the retaining wall?
Plus the handrail, plus the required for the handrail on the setback. Yeah, I understand he's got, he can't be putting the handrail right there, so maybe you say that that's a foot, which is generous.
Yep.
And then you give four more feet.
So a five-foot width as opposed to a 6.3-foot width, which is kind of where, where I was leaning, and then, you know, I had...
Because the calculations are very, it's complicated, what was there, what wasn't there, but I think a usable to resolve the situation, if you're going to cut the sidewalk anyway, let's cut it and get it as reasonable as we can.
Right. And the, the other question was where that sewer lays, the sewer, though, is not in the front yard setback, it's closer to the steps than to the front, so that doesn't come into play when you're reducing the width of the sidewalk.
I think it's, I think the reduction would need to be in front of that, so I don't think it would impact that.
Right. So, you know, my thought initially was, well, why not, if you're going to cut, but this unfortunately doubles the cutting, I was saying, well, why don't you make it look like a wine glass stem, you know, where the stem comes up and then the glass goes out, and so your sidewalk, but now you're cutting both sides, which is a lot more cutting.
Wait, no, I'm talking, I'm just cutting the one side.
I know you are.
You can't do that.
What I was saying, what I was saying was, you know, conceptually, to make it look, because my thought along the lines with you was, all right, well, we're going to take two feet off the one side. Well, now, now it walks up and then it kind of juts out and goes to the door, does that look, you know, how does that, appearance-wise, how does that look?
Six. One, six.
And it has to jut out because of that manhole?
No, well, no, he only has to take it out of the front yard setback, which is 27 feet from the sidewalk, which is not all the way to the house.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Yeah, I don't see why he couldn't take another foot.
Then it because, you're talking about...
That's not centered on the door, or what?
Yeah, I mean, does it, would it look odd to have it come up and out like, you know, like a boot, an upside-down boot, as opposed to more in the center and going up?
But if he doesn't mind?
Well, the problem is, if you start talking about salt cutting concrete, it gets a little expensive, you're making three cuts to make that work, because you've got to cut it twice between the retaining wall and the sidewalk and then the one side.
Oh, I'm not talking getting near the retaining wall.
My idea.
Oh, okay.
Right. So, yeah, so if he can't have this wine glass
Right.
look, because it, maybe that doesn't matter to him.
Thank you for your patience.
Oh, no problem.
The retaining wall is probably going to be about 80 inches thick, it's going to go right up to the top, so you don't want to be cutting that, you only want to cut the...
This is already nonconforming.
Yeah.
Right? So if you get the 27 feet, I mean, I think, you know, I don't think it makes sense to try to get another 27 feet.
To make it whatever, 56?
Right.
Or 54, I mean, yeah.
Four. I think it'll look odd, and it'll look strange, and if he's willing to do it this way, I mean, from our perspective.
On what's, on 1.6?
Yeah.
Do we have any other questions for our applicant? I know that was just kind of discussion there, but we needed to get through.
I have a question, when will the handrail be installed?
I would hope as soon as the applicant is prepared to put it in.
Do you know when the handrail is going to be installed?
Anytime when you, that's why we stopped, and I discussed this with Mrs. Roberts, so I cannot do anything until when we get agreed, because I learn from the past, I'm starting to say from the contractor, which is, he leave right now, I'm trying to reach him, I did the right thing, even I'm going through all this trouble, but I did, otherwise he could go with the money. So, I'm sorry, just here, just to, last time was the other meeting, which is Mr. John Adler, he, they asked him a good question, which is, I'm not trying to make myself or my case look good, but that's how it is, they ask him if it is any law or any code for the, how, why there should be the sidewalk, the answer is, there is no answer except two people walk side by side through the sidewalk. So, but right now, if I cut more than that with the railing this side, it's going to be more smaller than before, which is the sidewalk before, and which is, it's not helping me, I didn't take no picture. The bushes, I took them with my hand, I'm not trying to lie here or something, that's the truth, it was three bushes, three, and it was coming straight the concrete from the stairs, and it stopped right here, and it goes like this, and it goes around again, doesn't go all the way to the public side, so it was kind of, and you can see that, it's clearly, you can see it by the photo you have at the...
So, you know, the reason that we're asking you is because you're over the impervious surface for the front yard. It doesn't matter if, you know, someone can walk up the sidewalk side by side or not, because you can get rid of more of it and still be over the setback, I mean, the impervious surface. So, we're asking you to do the best you can to reduce the impact that, of the variance that you're requesting, all right? So we're asking you to take away some of the sidewalk. And, you know, the discussion that we're having is, it doesn't look to us like the original sidewalk, the width of it was five feet, it looks smaller than that from the picture that is in our packet, and that's okay. It sounds like, you know, your request may be considered as in a positive light, but we'll, we'll see. Any other questions for our applicant?
No, I just want to let you know, but the city will pick on it, your railing is probably going to have to go out much further than you have shown on that drawing.
It's going to go with the, like all the other neighbors, it must go, because when you go from the stairs...
Hold on, I'm just talking about the length of it from, towards the street, it's probably going to have to be longer, right now it shows it stopping, kind of where the, where the spot, it shows it aligning with this, but I'm saying that railing, just so you know, is going to have to come probably down to here.
I'm sorry, I don't...
The railing, the length of the railing left.
This is, is going to be new railing, I don't have the railing before.
That's okay.
Okay, all right.
We understand.
Okay.
Is there anything else you'd like to add to this?
Just, no, just for this question, probably it's going to make it clear, so when you come up from the stairs, there is like a small wall to your left, so it's exactly four feet to your left, so the railing is going to start from that wall exactly, which is four feet, so the highest is four feet, and it's going to go until we die with the, with the floor.
Yeah.
Like the other, on the other...
Yeah, the, the village will help you figure out where exactly it needs to be.
Okay.
It's not something that really is in our purview, because that's just going to be a permit, and they'll come out and they'll look at your plans and they'll, they'll figure it out with you, so.
Okay, okay.
All right. Is there anything else that you'd like to add?
No.
No? Okay. I'm going to close the case, I'm going to ask if there's a member of the board who'd like to make a motion. Thank you, Mr. Coling.
Move to recommend granting a revised request for a 281.15 square foot, 19.61% front yard impervious surface coverage variation to permit the widening of a front walk on the legal nonconforming structure at 241 Kilpatrick Avenue in accordance with the plan submitted.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Norg. Mr. Coling, your motion.
So this has, been in front of us before, I was just going to the village board, it's come back. Last time, as I recall, I mean, you were taking away the south sidewalk to kind of compensate for, you know, the new sidewalk that had already been put in place. I think a lot of our discussion last time focused around the railing that needed to be put in, because otherwise somebody could just fall off the side and down into, you know, in front of the garage doors there. So from my perspective, this is already nonconforming, I think he's made a, he had a significant adjustment, taking a foot off, 27 square feet, you know, so I think it meets the standards of review, I think he's tried to work, he's going to be putting a fence up, he's tried to work with the village, and he's stopped the contractor from doing anything else, and, you know, so I think he's acting in good faith, and so I think this meets the standards of review, and I can support it.
Thank you, Ms. Norg.
Yeah, I agree. You said a lot of those things, I think he's, you know, acted in good faith, and it is a nominal request, and I think he's trying to do the right thing, and I can support it.
Mr. Schneider, any additional comments?
I agree with the previous comments.
Mr. Sermon?
Yeah, I, you know, I wanted to bring those other issues, but I agree, but just made an effort to resolve the issue.
Yeah, I, you know, this, as Mr. Coling pointed out, this is a case that, situation where the work was done before a variance was requested, he came before us, I think we gave it a negative recommendation, is that right?
Yeah, three to three.
And then it, yeah, and then it went to the village board, village board remanded it back to us with the recommendation that this is the solution, or suggestion that this could be a solution, and not a recommendation. And it was up to us to decide if this was a request without having the work already been done, is this something that we would approve? So, I mean, I just, I don't like it when work's done and then people, you know, ask for forgiveness, but there's something to be said for the hoops he's had to jump through and what he's also offered to adjust this, so I think I would support it as well, so why don't we take a vote?
Mr. Coling?
Yes.
Ms. Norg?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Sermon?
Yes.
Chairman Duppie?
Chair votes yes as well, so it's going to go as a positive recommendation to the village board, the meeting's on December 5th, right?
November 27th.
November 27th, sorry, November 27th. The date is also on this letter, so if you can come up and sign one, take one with you, and...
A move to authorize the chairman to prepare the report and recommendations for zoning board of appeals for case number 2018-Z-36.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Sermon, all in favor?
Aye.
As well.
To approve the meeting minutes for the zoning board of appeals from Wednesday, October 3rd, 2018.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
As well.
Move to approve the meeting minutes for the zoning board of appeals for Wednesday, October 17th, 2018.
Second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
As well. I'm going to open the microphone to public comment right now. Thank you so much for, thank you very much. Nobody's rushing up to the podium, seeing nobody else is here, I will adjourn the meeting.